Dr. Kingsley, I would like to invite you to the podium to begin tonight's presentation about Black History Month.
Thank you, Ms. Zucker, school board members, Mr. Harding. We're so excited tonight to share with you some information, and I know they're going to post this PowerPoint. There we go. Black History Month, our national, state, and local history all year. So our instructional leaders want you to understand that our children are embracing Black history, cultural diversity, and Sarasota's cultural richness, and we want to do that all year long. When we think that our legislators have made it very clear that their expectation is that Black History Month is recognized in our school, we have incredible social studies specialists, Dr. Bernadette Bennett and Tracy Prince, and they send out really engaging resources for our staff, our teachers, to share with children. This one, from the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, has lots of resources for teachers, and of course, the kingcenter.org. You can imagine how rich that one, that site, is in resources. They also have lesson plans from Civic Ed, and that organization is the Center for Civic Education with tons of lesson plans for teachers. And africanamericanhistorymonth.gov is rich with really compelling photos and stories, and among my favorite, next place to visit, the National Museum of African-American History and Culture in Washington, DC. It's just incredible reviews, and the architecture is so compelling. So what are our schools doing? First, I want you to know that our leaders, our school leaders, have all spent the last few months in principal meetings. They have been immersed in culturally responsive strategies shared with their schools, and the schools are doing a variety of things, like student-led announcements featuring famous and lesser-known Black Americans who should be famous. They have been read to by Harriet Tubman, visiting some of our schools. On February 28th, I hope you all can attend Booker Middle School, where they are having a Black Heritage Celebration, or join Booker High's R O T C, J R O T C, tomorrow as the students bring dignity to the resting places of several Black veterans at Woodlawn Cemetery. Our teachers are also interweaving Florida history with Black history, and they use sites such as this one called Florida Memory. But there is so much history right here in Sarasota. Because of the incomparable Vicki Oldham, who put together this project that documents our community's history, I look forward to the day when all of our children can take the tour through Newtown and understand the strength of the people, the courageous trailblazers, as they are noted by Vicki, who are highlighted on several markers throughout Newtown. And then there is the local history that came alive for me at the Sarasota Film Festival when I got to see Booker High's VPA documentary called Into the Storm. This is incredible story, and it is, has also been featured in Prague at their film festival. These two students who put together amazing footage from our local folks and some who have moved out of our local area about how the Booker High basketball team in the '60s, the late '60s, under the real awesome leadership of Henry Porter, whom my husband is one of thousands who went to see him play, and smashed the, what's that thing called? Basketball. I don't know. The backdrop.
Backboard.
Backboard. He smashed the backboard. And so I think their team averaged over 100 points. It's just awesome. But simultaneous to that, the history of, the rich history of racism that existed even when we were trying to desegregate, and how the students led the way. I want to show you a couple of minutes from this, and it does not do justice. This is a couple of minutes from the trailer, and I want you to be on the lookout because John Tempeh and Lori Burton were the teachers that the students worked under. They promised that there is going to be a showing of this film in March, and I am very hopeful that we can get the word out and get a lot of our teachers and families, and hopefully you, to attend. So here's just two minutes of the trailer. The voice you hear is John Tempeh, and let me cue this up for you.
A community enclosed by the boundaries of racism.
You could go to the railroad track to the east, you could go to Coconut to the west, and you can go to 10th to the north, and you could go to 4th to the south. And that was the boundary. When you cross over them, it was, you was identified as outside of your neighborhood.
Crossing those tracks, you did that at your own risk, because you didn't know what was on the other side of those tracks, because we'd been told, don't go on the other side of the tracks. The first time I ever saw a white person was on our side of the tracks. And I ran home and I said, Mom, Mom, I saw this, I don't know what it was. And she said, I described it, and she said, oh, that's just a white person. I said, what's a white person? I've never seen a white person. And she said, well, they are there, but be careful. Don't look at them, don't talk to them, just stay away. And that's what we did.
Created an environment where they could feel safe in the city.
There was certainly separation where we were, where we lived. They called it Black Bottom. We called it the community.
I had no idea that there was a time when you had more than 60, and I'm saying that correctly, Black businesses that were owned and operated in the Newtown area. At one point, we had our own, our very own theater.
And those businesses was able to prosper and to thrive, because we had to, we supported those businesses, because we didn't have the ability to go outside the community and utilize businesses outside the community. So we had, we had restaurants, we had clubs, we had barber shops, we had beauty parlors, you know, all of this was in our community.
Their school grabs the attention of the nation.
And suddenly, it's like, you're from Sarasota, Florida? That's where Booker High School is.
My love, and I thank everybody that grew up in this community, their love was Booker High School, being at Booker.
With an astonishing team.
Howard Porter shattered the backboard, popped that backboard, tore it down, tore the goal down, so we couldn't even, we couldn't go to state record that night.
I hate to turn it off, but it is only an eight-minute trailer. You have to see the whole thing, because what ends up happening is the students were so collaborative, and they just determined that it was okay, they dealt with the desegregation, the moves to the other high schools, the closing of Booker High, but when they tried to close Amarillo's Park, the elementary portion of the Booker Schools, students came up with a plan, and I'm just going to tease you there, because you need to see it. It's, you know, it's a history we all should know, and the story is so well-done. So I'm really grateful to Booker High and John Tempeh and Lori Burton for leading those students to create this. You can imagine the hours of interviews. Finally, you are in for a real treat. So we are so delighted, one, to have Scott Ferguson back in the house. Yes. And to have Julie Leach and Ariel Blue. Would you please come up? Julie, you know, is the Executive Director of West Coast Black Theater Troop, and Ariel Blue is a staff member and also a performer. Are you resting up?
Yeah, she'll come up one minute. Introduce her.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, school board members, for inviting us here today. We're delighted to be here to help you celebrate Black History Month. You may not know that, Laura, was there a slide in here?
Yes, I didn't do my job. Sorry.
That's okay.
Sheesh, I just let you on your own.
That's okay. Don't mind. So, West Coast Black Theater Troop has been delighted to be partnering with the school district and the Jazz Club of Sarasota for over four years now. This is our fifth year to be in the schools with our Black History Month program, which comprises a few different elements. We have a elementary program. Let me show you what that is. We call it Rhythm and Tales, and it's the program where schools can actually come to visit us and see a show. We actually have taken it out to a few charter schools, to smaller environments that we can take it out to, but it's about no bullying. The story is in particular, the last couple of years we did, the elementary program was called Flamingos and Alligators, and it was really about the desegregation of the beaches in Sarasota County, and it was geared for 4th grade to deal with their local history, fit into their local history curriculum. And then we also have a high school program, which is Jazz Links. This is the one we've been doing for four years, and we're into our fifth year now. It tours to all the 11th grades in the Sarasota system. We've been invited in there. I want to thank Steve Cantiz and the 11th grade history teachers for being so excited about this program and welcoming us into the schools to do it. We go into the classrooms and do a more, maybe intense portion in the classroom, or more interactive portion is maybe a good way to say it, and then it's easier for kids to ask questions and all when we're in the classrooms about the program. But then we come back to the school and we do a larger performance for anybody in the school, and if school board members want to come and see that, then we would love to have that, too. So the first two years, we focused on the Harlem Renaissance and the Great Migration. Then we did two years on the Civil Rights Movement of the '50s and the '60s. Now we're back this year with our Harlem Renaissance show. So it all fits in with 11th grade history, and I want to thank Bernadette, Dr. Bernadette Bennett, who helped us design the curriculum for this, so that it has all the DBQs and curriculum standards that it needs to really fit perfectly into their curriculum. A lot of the students really appreciate and express to us how wonderful it is to have representatives there of what they're learning, so it feels like they really understand it better. And also for our minority students in the school system, it's lovely to have representatives of their own culture teaching the materials. So that's been an exciting piece for us. Let's see, is there anything else I want to, just want to thank Brian Hirsch and Angela Hartvitzon also for their support of our program and helping us get it into the school system. So as a special treat today, we do have Ms. Ariel Blue, who's a singer-performer on our professional stage. She's not really a member of Jazz Links, because Jazz Links today was at Northport High School all day, that team, but she's been on our stage over 10 years. I think her first professional show with us was Ain't Misbehavin', but I might be wrong. Certainly the first one I saw you in. But this year, she was in Motown Christmas, and she's in an upcoming show called Ruby. So if you come to our theater, you'll get to see her, too, but she's going to sing the Black National Anthem for us today. Thank you to the school board. Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring, ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Thank you so much, Ariel. You have some brochures about West Coast Black Theater Troop. We can also answer any questions if anybody has any questions today. Other than that, I just thank you for your time.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, I just had some comments to make. Anytime I can see Ariel perform is a great day for me. It brings tears to my eyes. You just are absolutely wonderful, and thank you for all you've done for our community, because your performances are always exceptional. And I feel the same way about the West Coast Black Theater Troop.
Thank you.
I grew up in the segregated South, and I taught high school when desegregation was taking place. So I have very strong feelings about the way it was implemented and handled for the students and the teachers, and it wasn't done very well. I remember Charlene Hunter-Gault being the first student, it entered my university, University of Georgia, first African-American student to enter the University of Georgia. How frightened we all were for her. And then I fast-tracked to now, and, you know, coming here and meeting her at West Coast Black Theater Troop.
Lives here.
I think I met her at the theater last year. But this is so important. Black history is so important. We have come a long way, but we have a long way to go. And I want to thank you, I want to say to Scott Ferguson, whom I dearly love, and to all those that work with you, and I know you have a small staff and you work very, very hard, and you've done great things at the theater. How much we love you and how important your organization is to the Black community and to the history of the Black community, and how much we appreciate you being here today, and how we appreciate all that you're doing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Segler?
No, I, you know, I was listening to Florida Matters the other day. I listen to NPR all the time, and I'm driving in the car all the time, and it was a couple, it was earlier, a couple of weeks ago, and they covered the Black Florida Troop. And I think it's amazing, because statewide, it really is such a gift to have in our community, and I love how we're able to integrate it into our, for our students to learn, because not only is it amazing for the arts, but to tell that story, which is very, very deep, as Mrs. Goodwin just mentioned, but also, how important it is, but the impact it's had just locally as well. So I'm so appreciative of what you guys do and to open that, and through art, to me, is the best way to tell stories. I think you touch so many more people, and you'll capture their attention, certainly not just students, but anyone else, and your voice gave me goosebumps. It was absolutely beautiful, so thank you very, very much for that performance, but thank you again for the partnership.
Well, we're so delighted that Nate Jacobs decided to do this 20 years ago, and has really made such an impact on the community and on so many lives, so many local lives, like Ariel's a local person who grew up in the troupe in a lot of ways and became a professional. Now she's on the professional stages, so that's part of our mission, too, is developing young actors and actresses. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Brown?
I'm sorry, I'll stay up here.
You can't get away that easy.
I, too, want to thank you for bringing this educational component to our schools to help our teachers and our staff, you know, bring something that can interest our students, because sometimes it's hard. But, you know, it doesn't mean that we all should stop learning, too, you know, like this movie and all. I did not grow up in a segregated, I grew up, you know, Chicago, Wisconsin, and it's like, I was shocked to see the kind of segregation they had down here, and that it was, like in my lifetime, these things were happening. It sounded like it was way back in history when, you know, I was learning about it. It just didn't seem like it was happening now. But even that, just last night, I was reading the Palmer's Almanac, actually, in the month of, and learned that Dr. Martin Luther King, you know, entered college at 15 and got a PhD at 19. I mean, I understand that he was a wonderful man, but I didn't understand that this is a person, you know, when we talk about our gifted students and we were working, you know, at Pine View, yes, somebody that was excelling, and so we need to be able to reach out to those people regardless of their color and make sure, because there are gifted students, you know, that don't look at the mold, and we need to reach out to those, so that there are more people. If there's another Martin Luther King out there, that we can reach out to them, touch them, and help them to grow and reach their full potential. And thank you so much for coming and explaining this to us. We all know, we're familiar with the Black Theater, but not everyone in our community is. You're tucked away up there. But it's a wonderful program, and if you don't have season tickets, it's hard to get a show ticket.
Not this year. You can get some, we're running through June. You can get some.
Okay. Well, for some reason, we let our, we'll be contacting you. Thank you.
You can always call me, Shirley.
Well, I'd like to also thank you for coming. I enjoyed your singing. I enjoy the National Anthem. I can sing most of it now, because I've been around it so long. But I'm from Brooklyn, New York, and we didn't know from segregation. My first exposure to it was flying to Atlanta one day and noticing that there were black and white water fountains, and I was shocked that there was such a difference, and that people were treated differently, because I didn't have that growing up. That was a rude awakening for me. And I remember my grandson, when I was driving through Orange Avenue to Booker High School, and he asked me, why are all the dark-skinned people living in this area? And I had to explain to him that this was the community where most of the dark people grew up, and they had family there, and that's why the majority of the dark-skinned people were located in this area. But, I mean, this is a six-year-old asking me why, because he didn't see them where he lives. And that, this is recent, because he's just 20. So it was, it's awareness that we need to make sure that our students have of the different cultures. So I'm very glad that we have Black History Month. And I'd also like to put in a plug for Booker High School. Their kaleidoscope fundraiser is March 28th at 6:00 PM at Michael's. Shamelessly, that's where my grandsons go to school there.
Oh, wonderful.
So it's been a wonderful, thank you so much for coming.
Appreciate the plug, because I'm on the committee, too.
I know. You're involved with that.
Yeah, it's a wonderful school, and Dr. Shelley's an amazing person.
Yes, she is. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to regress a moment, because our student representative is here now. And I would like to introduce Laura Santander from Northport High School. And Laura, would you tell us a little bit about yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Laura Santander, and I'm from Northport High School. I'm the Executive Vice President of our Student Government, and I've been in student government since my sophomore year. I've been in Northport High School for four years, and I've achieved a lot of great stuff there. I love Northport High School, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Where are you going to go after high school?
I'm planning to attend college. I have been accepted to three universities, and I still haven't decided which one. I've been accepted to the University of South Florida, and I've been accepted to a Florida Gulf Coast University, and I've also been accepted to a Florida Atlantic University, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to go to USF. I think I'm going to commit there for sure.
That is great.
Go Bulls.
Thank you, and good luck to you. I have a certificate here that I will bring down to you in a minute.
Thank you.
The superintendent's report?
Yes, good afternoon. I'd like to ask Lauren Strope, who is a CPA with Cherry Beckett, our external auditors. She's the Audit and Assurance Senior Manager, and she's going to give you an overview of the district's audit that was actually completed in December.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me here. I am not going to sing, so. You would not like it. Okay, so we have completed the audit of your June 30th, 2019 financial statements. All of our reports are dated December 11th, 2019, and what I'm here to do today is really just go over the nature, timing, and extent of our audit procedures, and kind of let you know how everything went. I did just want to touch on the fact that the school district, the reporting entity in the CAFR, contains the primary government, or the school board itself, a blended component unit, which is the financing corporation, and then discreetly presented component units, which are your charter schools. We actually do not audit the charter schools. They are audited by other auditors, and our report reflects that. We actually follow quite a few different standards when we perform your audit. The first is the Generally Accepted Accounting Standards, also known as GAS, and that requires us to look at and design our audit procedures to ensure that you have reasonable, but not absolute assurance, that there are no material misstatements in your financial statements. So that's the primary standard that we follow. The second one is the Government Auditing Standards, and those require us to look at internal controls over financial reporting. We actually don't opine on internal controls, but what we could tell you is, hey, if we found anything, it would show up in our report as either a significant deficiency or a material weakness. I am pleased to report that you have a clean opinion. So on your GAS report, it is the highest level of assurance that we, as your external auditor, can give you that your financials are free of any material error, and we also did not have any internal control findings during our GAS-related audit to report to you today. We also follow, it's a very long title, so I'm just going to call it Uniform Guidance. It used to be A133, and that's the guidance that prescribes how we need to audit your federal audit programs, your federal programs. So we did complete that audit. I'll go over that in a little bit more detail here in a bit, but that was also a clean audit, meaning we did not have any issues with compliance or with internal controls over compliance. Man, that is a mouthful to tell you about today. And the last thing that we follow is obviously any rules of the Audit of General Florida and any appropriate Florida state statute that needs to be considered when opining on the financial statements. I did just want to touch on the financial statement disclosures. That's always a big thing in terms of the audit. Those were neutral, they were consistent, and they were clear. Every year, you go for your Certificate of Excellence and Financial Achievement that you get, and I'm confident that you'll get it again this year. If you ever want to know how anything is accounted for here in the district, Note 1 has all of your significant accounting policies, so any judgment that management is making is kind of disclosed there. It talks about, you know, usefulized for things that are being depreciated, or anything that is an estimate driven is going to be disclosed in there. A lot, in quite a few of the previous years, somebody has been up here talking about a restatement to you as it relates to the implementation of a new standard. We did not have that this year. There was no restatement involved. There was one new standard, but all that did was add a little bit of extra disclosure in your debt footnote. So nothing on the face financial was affected by this implementation. We did, and we were able to perform our audit according to the plan, scoped, and timing that we communicated to you in our letter dated in July. That's really important, because if we had to change how we were going to do our audit, usually it means that information couldn't be provided to us, or things didn't really go according to plan, and generally speaking, that means that there's a problem, but we did not have that in this case. Prior to retention, we do talk to management about things that might be going on in the school board, and those are in the normal course of our professional relationship before the actual engagement letter is signed. The numbers that you have in the CAFR are not just hard numbers. There's a lot of inherent estimate and judgment that management makes in order to come up with these numbers. They're really an important part of coming up with any GAAP financial statements. So some of the really important ones that we came, that we were looking into were the estimate of the usefulized property and equipment, the estimate of liabilities for insurance claims, and early retirement payable, which are based on actuarial calculations, and the estimate of pension and OPEB liability, which is also based on actuarial calculation. We look at the data that's being put into that actuarial calculation to make sure that things like the discount rate are reasonable and given. things like the discount rate are reasonable and given this situation. So we did not find anything that was out of place or caused us to think that anything was materially misstated. This is a very important slide. This is where I would disclose to you if there were any audit corrections or past audit corrections as a result of our audit procedure. So what that means is after management has given us the trial balance, if we, as the auditor, find something and propose an entry, they make it, that becomes an audit adjustment. A past audit adjustment is when we say, hey, we found this, this entry needs to be made, and management, for a variety of reasons, might make the decision not to make that entry. In both cases, I would disclose that to you, but we are pleased to report that there were no types of journal entries of any kind this year. We did not have any disagreements or difficulties with management. I just want to say that working with them is such a treat. They are able to provide everything that we need. Every time we have a question, they have a response for us. Every time I ask an extra question, they provide documentation for me, so it's really great, and I do appreciate that. To our knowledge, management has not consulted with other accountants, and that is only important in the event that management is relying on what that other accountant is saying for a representation in their financial statements, and we would just want to make sure that both we and management got the same information. We did receive a representation letter for management, from management, before we issued our financial statement opinion, and that just basically says that everything that they provided to us or said to us during the course of the audit is true to the best of their knowledge and belief. We did issue a management letter as required by the Rules of the Auditor General of the State of Florida. That was a no-comment letter. And we did issue our report on compliance with local investment policies, and again, that was a no-comment letter. Had there been something that we would brought to your attention, there would have been a comment in those particular letters. Your CAFER contains a lot of supplementary information, such as the statistical section and the information section. We actually don't opine on those things, but we do read through them and make sure that if in the event they're saying something that should tie back to the financials that were audited, we ensure that they do. And for the single audit, you were considered to be a low-risk auditee as defined by the Uniform Guidance. What that means is you did not have any findings or late filings in the last several years. The two grants that we tested this year were the IDEA cluster and the Student Financial Assistance Cluster. And again, as I mentioned before, those were clean, so there was no either compliance findings or internal control over compliance findings. We do believe that management employs an appropriate level of conservatism when applying accounting principles. As part of our audit procedures, we are required to talk to management, or talk to someone on the board, and various other people throughout the organization of their knowledge of fraud. Nothing was reported to us. Had something been reported to us, we would have worked in audit procedures in order to address that risk, and had it been significant, we would have come straight to you. Last, but certainly not least, as your independent auditor, we are, in fact, independent of the school district, both in fact and appearance. We are your auditors year-round. We serve at the pleasure of the district, not just now, not just when I'm here doing the audit, but all year long. So if you ever have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Of course.
If you don't feel comfortable answering the question, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
It has to do with the internal controls and how you made no assurance about internal controls.
Yes, sir.
Because it's not part of the audit plan. But here, we're in the process now of looking at an internal auditor. I don't know if you're aware of that process and looking at some internal controls. Although you gave no assurances of it, you took it into consideration when you developed your plan, correct?
Yes, sir. So the government auditing standards do require that we look at that, and then it does require that we report any deficiencies.
Correct, correct. And I'm not, I'm not going to be asking you about that particular issue.
Okay.
My question is, is if you were us, and given the fact that you have some understanding of our internal control, where would you start? If you, if there was a department or a place in the school district that you wanted to, you wanted to test, if you were going to do such a project, where would be the top place you would look into? Do you understand the question?
I do understand the question. I absolutely.
And again, if it's outside your scope and you don't feel comfortable answering, I'd understand.
It's a little outside of the scope, but at the same time, purchasing is always something that I think every governmental entity could always look into and see.
And if I could follow up, would you mean purchasing of capital and construction, or do you mean purchasing as in operating ordinary supplies and thing?
Generally the latter.
Widgets? I'm sorry?
Generally the latter.
Generally the latter? Okay. Thank you very much.
Of course.
And no.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions? No, I just, I just wanted to make another comment. Working with Cherry Beckett has been always a pleasure, but I do want to give a big shout out to Valerie. Raise your hand, Valerie. Valerie is the General Manager of her Accounting Services, and she is the one who coordinates the audit, and she makes sure that every i is dotted and every t is crossed, and she is the primary reason for why we always have clean audits. So congratulations to her.
Thank you, Valerie.
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And you need to begin to summarize, and you must stop speaking when the buzzer rings, please. Please note that respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting. Whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, you should listen politely and respectfully without making any sounds of approval or disapproval, including clapping. I have one card. The card that I have is Steve Simon.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Simon. I have a concern about what I was told is an ongoing standard school policy. Policy is not long, does not supersede law. Administrator, I believe, has taken liberty after liberty and has implemented what she calls policy and has put my daughter in a compromising position. I've been told that this policy allows administrators to corner alone in a room, door closed, articles, clothing being removed, hands being put on bodies in inappropriate places, and because they're told that something could be wrong, they do this without any other adult supervision. If there is a problem, there are school SROs in the high school, and they weren't called until after my daughter was forced to retreat away from this person and curl up in a chair. After speaking with the principal, was told, oh, that's policy. After speaking with Sergeant Gale, the school police, yep, that's policy. After trying to call the school board members, leaving multiple messages, speaking with a couple secretaries, no one has gotten back to me about this situation. I don't think any student, not just my daughter, but any student should be cornered alone with somebody, and then when the person retreats, then call the SRO, then give them a piece of paper and demand that they write down what happened. So now your victimizer can tell you to write me a statement. Yeah, that always works out real good. I'm concerned that if this is a policy, if administrators, employees, any adult is allowed to be in a room, close the door, put themselves between the door and the student, and hands being put on people, if there's that much of concern, an SRO should have been called. Another assistant principal should have been called, but my daughter should not have been molested by Becky Moyer at Sarasota High School.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Mrs. Cantis, would you speak with Mr. Simon outside? If you will go out into the hallway, Executive Director Steve Cantis will come out and speak with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Well, I'm confused right now. I just had somebody just come to me and tell me a child was molested, and, which I think, my first question was, is this reported to DCF? If not, we have all been made aware that someone's making an accusation about a child being molested.
I'm getting a nod.
I understand he's just talking to, talking to Mr. Cantis.
No, no, no. I'm getting a nod from deputy police.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record that that has occurred because I don't want a responsibility on me and me not follow up, so.
There was an addendum added to the Instructional Classified Personnel Report after the agenda was published.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? It's stuck.
If I click Present, or I get the.
Can we have a voice vote, please?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes five to zero. Nothing called for comments. New business, item 27. May I have a motion, please? And then discussion.
I move for approval of the 2019-2020 Instructional and Classified Bargaining Agreements as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is just the final ratification. It was ratified and approved by the Instructional Bargaining Unit at 99% approval and by the Classified Bargaining Unit at 98% when SCTA ran their ratifications. This includes many of the language changes at the request of the board and includes the salary settlements for both the instructional and the classified, inclusive of the $12 minimum wage, which raises our employees from 4.71% up to 33%. Our lowest-paying staff, or our lowest-earning staff. It moves bus drivers up two salary lanes from what's called an SSP 5 to an SSP 7, and it moves our ESE aides that are in cluster classrooms up to a paraprofessional level and eliminates the lowest level for aide positions. So we have SSP 4s and SSP 7 aides.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, I just want to say how happy I am that we have this done, and I want to say thank you to our Superintendent, Mrs. Corcoran, and to the staff, Jody Dumas, Roy Sprinkle, and others who have worked very hard on this. I think this is really great that we have this behind us and looking now at a new superintendent. And I also think that, you know, it's great for our, for our staff. I happened to spend a little time at a nail salon the other day with a couple of our bus drivers who were really delighted with this, and I think it's wonderful for our teachers and all of our staff, all of our administrators. But I especially think it's delightful and beneficial to those classified workers that we have who work so very hard for an hourly wage, and so I just want to say thank you.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yeah, I want to echo that. I am very happy to see both teams come together. I think that it has certainly been a long couple of months, if not, but I want to congratulate Superintendent Corcoran and Mr. Dumas and Mr. Sprinkle and the entire bargaining team. I'm really pleased with the number of the items that were just highlighted. The $12 minimum wage is something that we can be really proud to offer here. I'm certainly focused on the yes-y aid and elevating that as illustrating a priority for the, and the substantial role that they play. And also that there were some language items that I know that we have been working as a board to address for some time, and we were able to achieve at the same time as well. So sometimes that's overlooked, and the financial focus is all that is addressed, but there were some great achievements, I believe, on the language standpoint that were mutually agreed upon. So I am very pleased. This is a great positive direction after, I think, and well-needed. So thank you to all, and I will absolutely be supporting this.
Mrs. Brown?
I want to echo some of those comments. You know, when I heard what some of our employees were earning, I truly was shocked. And, you know, I think we've all served some time, you know, in the kitchens, you know, at the lunchtime, and we know how hard those gals work. And to find out they weren't even making $12 an hour and some of the other aides in the classrooms, that was very disheartening to me. And I hope that we can continue down this road and move it even further in the next several years so that we get beyond the $12 an hour and perhaps even get to $15 an hour for these employees. And I, again, say thank you to our bargaining team, and the lead on that was Ms. Corcoran. It will make it so much easier to go into looking for a new superintendent now that we've got this behind us, and so I applaud everyone who worked on this. And I know there was a lot of language, old language, that was taken out of the contract and some changes that needed to be made, and so there was a lot of, lot of work that had to be done on the contract, too. And this is a good, good agreement that we've got, and I'm glad the overwhelming number of approvals they've got when they put it out to their staff.
Well, I'm very glad that this is over and that we have come to an agreement, and we're on a better footing with the union right now, and that we were able to increase our teachers' salary and other salaries as well. And I'm especially proud of the fact that we've gone to a $12 minimum. That was really hard to do, and if you think, and then the other thing was, it was a 33% increase for some staff with, if you put that 33% out there and you put out 3.5% for somebody else, not realizing the difference in the pay scale, you'd understand why the 33% was so necessary to bring our employees up to par. But I'm very happy because those people, all of them, needed that raise, and I'm glad we were able to settle with the, which has been on the table all along, for the $12, the bus drivers, and the cafeteria workers, all of that has been on the table. So I'm glad that this is finally passed us and we can move forward. So with that, no one else is wanting to speak. Please vote.
Aye.
Hang on, let's see if we can get this thing to work. No.
It's not working.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. It passes five to zero. Item 29.
28, which really we.
28. Excuse me.
28 is, I move that the board approve the updated salary schedule as presented.
Second.
And discussed.
Yeah. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, Bridgette, I didn't hear you.
I said aye.
Sorry.
Okay.
I was listening, I didn't hear it, but I just want to make sure. And the chair votes aye, so it passes five to zero. Now 29.
I move that the school board approve the contract with Kroll Associates for the Equity Policy and Procedure Review, the recommended, recommendation and the training as presented.
Second.
And for the board member and the public knowledge, since our conversation at the world. workshop this morning, there have been some timelines put into the contract with Kroll that you've got in front of you now and which you're voting on. Phase one will be concluded on or before March 31. Phase two, their deliverables under phase two will be due on or before May 15. And phase three, which is the training and implementation part, will be concluded before the start of the 2021 school year, so by August. Otherwise, the contract is the same as you saw this morning.
Okay. I'd like to ask a question on that one. Concluded by the end of August, but we're officially closed until the last two weeks in August, so was that taken into consideration, like July?
Well, the idea is that the training will take place by the start of school, so that will be taken care of. Our administrators are here in advance of that time. Certainly, if we want it later, it could be, but they're obliged to do it in that timeframe, which is what I understood the board to want.
I want it as early as possible, but I also want to recognize that we're closed for summer, and most of the teachers and staff have gone for the month of July.
I believe that their training will be primarily of the train-the-trainer mode, so they are not going to be getting into the rank-and-file necessarily with the training. They're obliged to do three or four trainings.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
I'd just like to make a comment, and I am very supportive of this and excited that we are going to have an organization like Kroll Associates in to do this important work. I think this puts us on the right track to best practices in our equity policy and procedures. So I'm looking forward to this, and we'll start our new year next fall with this training there in front of a new round of teachers and situations. So hopefully, this will start us off on a good foot, but recognizing that I am excited that we will be moving forward on this and be an organization, perhaps one of the first school districts in the state, who will have best practice.
Mrs. Ziegler?
I agree with Mrs. Goodwin there. I think that I'm very pleased and appreciative that we are all in agreement here and taking this step, and I think it speaks volumes that we did. One, I want to applaud our council for really being thoughtful about the scope because it could have, I mean, it was not an easy component, but I think you did a great job narrowing it, and I'm also appreciative that we were able to tighten up the timeline because that's also important, too. But what I think is really also something that I hope sends a message to, in a positive way, to the staffs, to the community, that we are, as a board, taking this very seriously. We see the value of this investment, given what we've dealt with in the past, but seeing it as an opportunity to really lead the way with lessons learned, and that as we move forward, that this is something that this board is, you know, taking by the reins and taking seriously, and as we go through the implementation, hoping that message is also loud and clear throughout the organization as well. So I'm very, very appreciative and look forward to the future and the outcome of this to protect our students and our staff. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown?
I think we only need to look at the hearing of citizens today to understand why we sort of need this. Not only do we need the training so we know how to act, but we also need to know how to react and how to reach out to someone who is the victim or perceived victim of this so that they understand, because we heard he didn't want to fill out the form, but have somebody that knows how to work with a victim to make sure that they understand what the process is and help them go through it, to let them know that we're here, we want to protect you, but to work not only actively in front, but also reactively when a victim comes forward, to walk them through that process.
I'm particularly grateful for the training component because I think that's what's been lacking. I've had people come to me and ask me, well, I don't know what a hostile work environment is. I don't know what constitutes sexual abuse. You would think that people do know, but they don't. So I'm really excited about the training component, and I can't wait until all of our staff is trained, and then you'll be on to business and no more excuses about what to do and what not to do. It'll be right there and ready. So I'm really grateful for this. All right? Item 30.
Vote aye.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes five to zero. We're doing well today. Item 30, please.
The board... Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. I thought it would be more appropriate.
Yes.
Okay. Jane likes this. She's smiling. That the board approve the contract of the Florida School Board Association for the superintendent search as presented to the school board that we have, the contract that we have in front of us.
Second.
Right. And based on the conversation, again, at the workshop today, the contract you have in front of you now has, in paragraph two, a date of September 1, 2020, as opposed to the July 1 date. September 1 or until the selection of the superintendent, if earlier.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
There also was an issue brought up, I think when the proposal was made, that there may be a conflict because we have members of our board that are also on the board of FSBA, and I understand you got a legal opinion on that?
We received an informal opinion from the Commission on Ethics saying that the school board, there was no impediment to the school board contracting with FSBA for these services in those circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's good you bring that out. All those in favor of the contract, please say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And it passes five to zero.
Five to zero.
I listened for voices. I didn't hear your [inaudible], but I knew where you were coming from.
I made the motion.
I know, but you stopped the vote. Okay. Are there any comments from the board?
You want that?
I will. I will.
Mrs. Brown?
You know, we had some very difficult decisions, important decisions, that we've had to work together, and I'm glad to see that our board has worked together unanimously on the contract and the raises for the teachers and on the contracts that we've got for the equity policy and on the superintendent search. We're working together. I'm glad to say that and hope we continue.
Amen.
Amen. Let's bring West Coast back to do some songs for us.
Yeah, that would be apropos. All right. Our next meeting will be on, I don't have it in front of me. What's the first Tuesday?
Is it March 3?
Our next meeting will be at March 3. There'll be an audit committee at 4:00, and at 5:00, we will have a meeting on the superintendent, the superintendent search. And at 6:30 will be our regular school board meeting. Thank you. We are adjourned.
You've got a bit of hammer in that thing. You didn't like to do it.